A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call. In the letter to the Commissioners dated June 12, 2025, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, June 17, 2025, at 5:15 PM in the conference room at the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of our county, and, Lord, we pray for the safety of our military men and women and our first responders. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Commissioner Milner.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Van Genhoven.
Here.
And Commissioner Jensen.
Here.
Okay, welcome, everyone. We'll start off by approval of the minutes.
I have a correction in the six-three minutes. Let me get this a little bit closer here. I have a correction in the three-minute, uh, six-three minutes on page three. Under request for Burkhart's files, it says, "Moved by Commissioner Williams and seconded by Commissioner Jensen to request a list from Burkhart's fi- or Burkhart's office." The motion was to seek out the files. I already had a list. It was to actually seek out the files.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. So, uh, let's see, we're gonna approve the board minutes from six-three, 25, and six-ten, 25.
I'll move to approve the board meeting minutes of six-three, 25, as amended.
Support? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass.
I'll make a motion to accept meeting minutes from six-ten, 25, as presented.
Support.
In favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number six, approval of the agenda.
Move approval with the addition of what I would say is number 12 for new business, appointment to Central Upper Peninsula Materials Management Planning Committee with one opening.
Could we make it number 11 and move 11 down so closed session is at the end?
Sure. That would be my motion.
Okay.
Are we going to, uh...
I would like to also add, to go into closed session after general public comment.
I will amend my motion. I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Number seven, presentation of written communications received and forwarded. There was none. Number eight, reports of standing statutory special committees and others. There was none. And we're down to, uh, number nine, public comment on agenda items. And the first one on is Robert Barron.
Commission, um, a couple items here. Your last meeting, you talked about Drain Commissioner wanted more money. Just a comment about that. Drain Commission job is a token job. There's no drain districts in Delta County, uh, and it's, there's really nothing needed on that position. It's just another prop, uh, source for, uh, source of useless, unneeded, growth-repeating, property rights regulation and taxation. It should fall under Act My Tax. The other item is under the DeSalvo contract. The, I strongly urge the Lord to cancel contract negotiations with DeSalvo and start over in the search for an administrator, for an administrator that is ethical and professional and qualified for the position. DeSalvo was none of these in her last stint as administrator. A question I have not, I have not heard answered is why DeSalvo leaving her job at Upcap, an extremely woke-promoting institution, which is right up her alley. Uh, that question hasn't been answered. Uh, this for a job she clearly was unqualified for, causing the county to hire additional personnel in order to somewhat complete the task. DeSalvo will be coming in at a lower salary than Upcap. Could it be that the board, in bringing back DeSalvo after two-plus years in a woke-centered organization, is to implement this on the Delta County residents? A quote for you here, it's from Edmund Burke. Nobody made a greater mistake than he who did nothing because he could do only little. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Roy Matson.
Roy Matson, Escanaba. I guess I'm supposed to be here for something else, but I'll do what I came here to do. I also wanna talk about the Drain Commissioner position. Um, it seems that when Chris was given her history, that she, nobody seemed to know why it went to $50. The reason it went to $50, when Don Shirley was Drain Commissioner, he made $11,000. He came in front of the Commission at that time and asked to have his mileage and salary switched from $9,000 to $2,000. Dave Vard cut on very quickly and said, "Well, does this have anything to do with where you don't pay taxes on mileage?" So this discussion went on with the Commission, and then a little later, Dave said, "I wanna table this to look into what would be the duties of a Drain Commissioner in the Upper Peninsula." And he did. He took two months. He came back and talked to the board, and then it was reduced to $50, 'cause there's that one mandatory meeting that the Drain Commissioner has to be at. To have, uh, county drains, Delta County has none. That's how many, 'cause I know that was there before, and I know Chris thought there was more. There's none. You have to have a drain district. There's no drain districts in the county of Delta. Now, they can be put in by municipality, and also a Drain Commissioner can do petitions. But if that ends up happening, the Drain Commissioner has the unique power to levy taxes within a drain, um, district. So that's interesting, to level taxes on landowners for wherever he thinks we have water problems. Um, I know the endgame, the endgame is to try to get the new Drain Commissioner into soil and erosion. You have an excellent guy right now in building and zoning. In building and zoning, he just got a letter that I think he read to you or told you that the DEQ says he's doing a fantastic job. The majority of what I see are soil and erosions now have to do with buildings, and that was because when I was doing it through the district, we were out in the landscape more. So it was the other way around. But now the mostly, so you should have a building person there, and Jack can work with the public fantastic. So the only thing I see the Drain Commissioner doing is attending to one meeting, and also they, if there's a brand-new plat or subdivision in this county, the Drain Commissioner signs on. And we haven't had one of those in a while. Maybe with housing, we'll have some where he would sign on. But you wanna give somebody $6,000 and basically boost things up for that one meeting, and also if, if one comes. So I re- I knew this, but I spent three hours Sunday night, 'cause that's when I listened to the last meeting, researching this stuff, and it will show two drains in Delta County. The bank inter-county drain, I'm sorry, but that's around Lansing and Eaton County, and the Delta Mills drain, which is in Delta Township, and it flows into the Grand River. So don't always believe what you can search on the web. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment on the agenda items? Any more public comment on agenda items? Chris, anything on the...
There wasn't anything.
Okay. Hearing non, seeing none, we will move on to committee reports. Administration.
Do we have a public hearing?
Yep.
We have a public hearing.
Oh, yes, we do have a public hearing. Uh, public hearing on planning commission ordinance.
Make the motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay. Who wants to...
Do you wanna describe what the public hearing is about?
Public hearing. Go, go for it. Yes. I gotta leave here. So this is, this is an amendment to our planning ordinance, which currently states that there are two county commissioners on our planning commission. We are proposing a change to the ordinance for one county commissioner to sit on the planning commission, and the open seat to be filled by a member of the Delta County Township Association, under the jurisdiction of which we do the planning and zoning. Correct. So if anyone would like to come up and state their opinion on that, now is the time to do so.
Roy.
I think it's a great thing. You should also do that with every commission and, and actually put people who the, who the voters are on those, 'cause a lot of them have two county commissioners on there, and sometimes they take over, run the meetings, sometimes they're the whole committee, a subcommittee. So I think it's a fantastic thing. And I think Kelly came up with it. If you did, that's a fantastic thing. Maybe I'm giving credit to somebody else.
It was Patrick Johnson.
Okay, Pat.
I cannot take credit.
It's, thank you, but it's fantastic. It's a great idea.
Thank you.
Okay.
The, uh, planning commission, when I was on the board, was heavily weighed to, uh, members that were not in the districts that were being, uh, served. So this is a step in that direction, uh, but also the, according to your bylaws on that, that members appointed to the planning commission, uh, it's supposed to be heavily weighed for them coming from the areas that are going to be, um, ruled by the, uh, planning commission. And I'm not sure what your present commission board is, but, uh, when I was here, it was heavily the other way. We had a couple members from, I think, Ford River Township. That's got their own zoning, and there's a tendency to, to, uh, implement their, their agendas, even though they aren't even in the townships that are being regulated. So I think this is a good step, but it also needs to be looked at upon the other members of that planning commission to make sure they're from the areas that are being served. Thank you.
Anybody else? Any comment on? Any more comments? Seeing none?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay. Now, committee reports. Administrator report.
Good evening, everyone. This marks my final administrator's report, and I wanna send my deepest gratitude to the Board of Commissioners, the elected officials, and all the dedicated employees of Delta County. It has been a privilege to serve this community in the role of the county administrator, and I have appreciated the collaboration and unwavering dedication and steadfast support from each and every one of the employees, elected officials of Delta County. Delta County is truly fortunate to have such hard-working employees and elected officials who consistently go above and beyond for our community. While this report concludes my time as county administrator, rest assure you, you'll still be hearing from me, as I'm not moving far away, just adding a slightly further drive south to the airport, and I'm excited to continue serving our county as the airport manager. So I just wanna thank everybody. Onto some business that I've been, um, doing as the administrator. Fiscal year tw- I'm sorry, I wrote budget. It should be audit. Fiscal year 24 audit. Um, we're continuing to work with our auditors to finalize the 2024, um, audit. The remaining items that are open is the aged accounts receivables, which I'm just doing some reconciliation on historical invoices. Um, also tying in transfers in and out, fund balance schedules, and federal grant monies. At the airport, we had a meeting, a special meeting this Monday. Um, we discussed several topics. We're looking at, uh, purchasing from the Conservation District a gravely more and joining up with, uh, county maintenance. This will be used on the land side. We also discussed the PFC account and, um, a contract that we have approved with Mead and Hunt. Um, in regards to the Mead and Hunt, Chair Hero and I are going to schedule a meeting to discuss some of our AIP program, the PFC, and our general services contract with them. Uh, probate court, Judge Lund approached me, uh, I think it was around last week or so, and he's looking at changing one of his employee's structures. So he asked me, "What is his next steps?", and I told him, "We would have to bring this to personnel, look at the job description, um, he, and then also bring it over to finance", so that should be coming forward. Parks and Recreation, we have a new Parks Manager, Heather Leduc. She has successfully started in the Parks Department. I actually talked to her, um, earlier today. She's currently familiarizing herself with the position's responsibilities and coordinating with the various departments of the county, 'cause she works with maintenance, um, IT, uh, the Treasurer's Office, administration. So I'm excited to see our leadership move our, uh, Parks and Recreation Department forward. Building and zoning, Commissioner Williams and our administrator, Building and Zoning Administrator, forwarded a few complaints to me from an individual, and Building and Zoning and I are working together, um, to address those. And we also ordered our new folding machine that we approved, so.
Motion to place on file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Uh, let's see here, we have Finance Committee. Commissioner Jensen?
So the Finance Committee on, Committee on Six-Six of Twenty-Five, there were two items, um, that we will see later on this evening. Um, one deals with the, uh, salary range on the contract for the administrator. That was item number one. And the second item, which we would actually get to, I believe, uh, first, under our old business, and that would be the, um, the salary on the Drain Commissioner. So we'll address both of those coming up here. So, um, thank you.
Move to place on file.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Uh, Personnel Committee from Six-Six.
Yep, so the Personnel Committee met. It was primarily regarding the administrator's contract, which you will see below, um, in your next cloud, and then we had called that special meeting for June 10th, and that is all.
Move that we place on file. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Uh, Personnel Committee from Six-Six.
Yep, so the Personnel Committee met. It was primarily regarding the administrator's contract, which you will see below, um, in your next cloud, and then we had called that special meeting for June 10th, and that is all.
Move that we place on file. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion pass. Okay. Departmental updates. Any departmental updates? Seeing none, we will move on to unfinished business. Drain Commissioner requests increased annual salary.
So we brought this forward, um, to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee is recommending to increase the Drain Commissioner's salary from $50 to $60, and then also, um, any business-related expenditures to reimburse the individual.
Actually, it's not $60, it's $6,000.
Oh, I'm sorry, $6,000. In my head, there was...
It's back, it's back to the range that it was, yeah.
Yeah. I apologize. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Support.
Discussion.
I got a couple questions on it. Um, where are we pulling the funding from?
So our budget is, um, been set, so it would have to come out of our fund balance account.
In the future, where do we plan on pulling the funding from?
It would probably, um, we have received the $200,000 tax increase, which is covering our cost of living, um, increases as we go forward, so it would continually come from our fund balance, unless we were able to, um, increase our revenues.
Okay. Do we have a plan to increase our revenues?
Actually, didn't you just come up the, um, what our current receipt is for this year is an increase in the amount of stores that we had, in the revenue that we're getting from the state on the marijuana, correct? That's an increase over last year as well.
Yes. Um, some of those funds are obligated to pay for our upset program also.
Okay.
Do you know what the number is, off the top of your head?
No, I do not.
Okay.
And then, with the Drain Commissioner, is there duplication of services between, um, our soil and erosion, or soil and water, um, and the Drain Commissioner? Is it a position that we could get rid of?
Which, the soil and erosion, or the...
No, the Drain Commissioner.
No, the Drain Commissioner's an elected position, and we can only get rid of it if you're over a certain population, which we're not, and you have to replace it with, like, um, a, like an office.
Okay. So how much duplication of services are we doing then?
There's no duplication in services with soil and erosion. Soil erosion, one, is one of the core responsibilities for a Drain Commissioner, but we don't have them doing that, so it's done by, uh, it's done by the, uh, Jack Smith in Building and Zoning.
Right.
Uh, so there's no duplication. So the Drain Commissioner's not doing that work, but he could be doing that work. Um, and whether or not that's something that, uh, we wanted to discuss in the future, we could, but it's not something that's on, on the discussion right now. We haven't been discussing that.
And are we looking to do that? Are we looking to give him more duties?
Um, no. It's based on what's currently, if you look at what was, um, on the sheet that we were given, the things that are highlighted or have asterisks next to them, then those are what the Drain Commissioner is currently doing. And soil and erosion, he's already said he's good with Jack doing that. If that's the way we wanna move, that's just fine. He's not willing, he, he's not, like, asking to take that. He never did in the beginning.
Okay.
He's just doing his Drain Commissioner work.
Now, when we discussed this, uh, the last meeting, um, we discussed, uh, doing more of a performance-based instead of just a flat, and it seemed like that was kind of a decent compromise. How come we moved away from that?
Um, because there's no, um, there's no elected official that we do a performance-based evaluation and pay them based on performance. Absolutely no elected official that we do that with. Uh, so this seems a bit targeted. Uh, and then the all, the other thing was, um, the, um, Drain Commissioner is required to present to the Commission every November, uh, basically a synopsis of the work that they did the prior year. Uh, so that's already a part of their requirement, and it is the only requirement they're required to do with the Commission. Otherwise, they're an elected official. They don't have to, they don't have to answer to us. We don't get to micromanage them, essentially.
Right. Well, when, and when I said, um, performance-based, it wasn't, uh, attached to evaluation, it was attached to how many jobs they're actually doing. It's kinda like we have our performances based on, like, we get our stipend, but we also get a performance-based supplement, because we go to different meetings and we do different things.
Right.
So it wasn't an evaluation.
Hmm, well, it, when you say merit-based, that sounds like an evaluation.
No, I said performance-based. I never said merit.
Oh, perform, well, uh, there's no, we, we can't do that with elected officials.
We can't set a stipend like we set for ourselves?
We, we get paid per meeting that we go to.
Right. So we can't do that with him?
Well, we, we, we are, we're paying, it's the $6,000 for salary, and then it's the, uh, mileage on top of that.
But we could pay per meeting he goes to, like, per encounter he has with a property owner.
We could, but that's not what we're recommending.
Do you have something, like, in writing of your idea?
No, just, just our last discussion, we talked about, like, possibly $3,000 and then doing more of a performance-based with it.
So, did you do that with, uh, the Conservation District when you gave them $12,000 to do SESC permits?
We never...
Did you have that? Did you say, "I want"? You know, you gave them $12,000 or $25,000 a year to do SESC permits and to do, um, work with, uh, landowners. $25,000. Did you ask them to, you, did you say, "We're gonna give it to you based on every landowner that you talked to"?
They took care of their own mileage, though.
Okay.
Well, did they not?
Is, is $6,000 versus $25,000?
Well, did, did they not take care of their own mileage?
I have no idea what they did with their own mileage.
Well, exactly. So I would say they took care of their own mileage. We didn't have to pay for mileage. So my, my big fear is, "We're gonna set $6,000, but we know it's gonna be more."
How do we know? Well, because there's mileage.
Well, because there's mileage.
Yeah, of course.
So I would rather this, um, as I stated at the previous meeting, where, and I thought I had kind of a nodding of the heads going, "Okay, yeah, this would be decent", is if we had less, but then, um, and I gave the argument of, "I can show up to one meeting and then just make, collect my $9,000 and go home. However, I won't get reelected, and the Drain Commissioner may be the same way, but he's gonna still get, or that person may get that same chunk of money and still not have to do anything." So how do we...
Did you present your idea to Finance?
I presented it to this board.
I'd need to see something in writing, because it goes back and forth a lot.
Okay. Well, I would, I would like to, um, defer this to the following meeting, so I can present something in writing.
I think it is...
There's already a motion.
Oh, I understand that, but...
Yeah. And I, and I think this is, I feel like there's something more here that you're not, um, like, what is the problem with paying someone for the work that they're doing? And, and you have this idea that you know what this person does, and you know, I mean, it's, it's insulting to me, I'm sure it's quite insulting to the person doing this work, but you're saying, "If we are going to give you, uh, some salary, some sum, that you're just all of a sudden not gonna do your job."
No, this person may be fine, and every Commissioner may be fine, and every elected official may be fine. However, this is for the future. This is not just one person. We're not just setting this for the person, we're setting this for the position. And you don't know...
And we can take it away from the position, just like it was in the fut- in the past.
Um, I'm getting a shaking of the head by our clerk.
Well, not until the term is ended.
Well, correct, 'cause it's the person in the term. Yeah. I mean, that's exactly the same thing that we're, we're saying.
Right. And like I'm saying, I don't like an open-ended budget item of, "It's gonna be $6,000 plus whatever mileage we're gonna do."
And the mileage, he attends, uh, mandatory meetings, and those are, there would be mileage there. Other than that, it's mileage inter-county. So it's, it's just like any other official, elected official, who has to do their work. You know, you, you're using your own vehicle. This person has been in this position, not getting paid for the work that they've done. We can't pay them retroactively, so they've had two and a half years, of which they've been got, they've gotten $50, and they do a lot of work. There's a lot of work going on. And so i- it's, it's just sort of insulting to me, like, you know, "I don't know what this person does, so I don't wanna have to pay them."
See, I never said, "I don't know what this person does."
Well, it's, it's what it feels like to me. It's like, it, you're just making these accusations that a person, you know, you're gonna pay them, and they're not gonna do their job.
So, when you say, "I'm making these accusations", I've been accused of not knowing what the Drain District or the, um, the Drain Commissioner does, and that was your assumption. Um, that's very unfair. Uh, and then, just because I wanna have a solid budget item and say, "You know, $6,000's quite a bit of money, and we're gonna pull it out of General Fund. We can't keep dipping into the General Fund. We need to find a way to fund this." So do you know of another way to fund this position, other than the General Fund?
Marijuana funds.
Marijuana funds for a Drain District seems a little extreme. Like, it, it doesn't seem like that's what it's supposed to be for.
It's undesignated funds.
Well, I understand that, but, um, when you're using marijuana funds, you tend to wanna use it for, I would assume, law enforcement. I mean, that's, that's kinda where I...
That's your assumption.
Well, yeah, and I'm up here for that assumption. Um, people pay me to say, "Okay, I would like to see marijuana problems be handled", and the money go to marijuana people that enforce that, not just any random unchecked fund that we wanna put it into. So because of that, um, I wanna know, is there another way we're gonna fund this?
I don't know. I don't, but it's inappropriate for us to have an elected official who is working every day and using his own vehicle for, for the work and is being compensated $50 for a year. It's inappropriate.
And so with this, is it true that the Drain Commissioner could levy a, uh, yeah, either a tax or a, some sort of way to collect funds on anybody who has a drain in a district?
The Drain Commissioner has the authority to levy, uh, taxes, yes. That is not something this Drain Commissioner has ever talked about doing, nor, I believe,
I don't, but it's inappropriate for us to have an elected official who is working every day and using his own vehicle for, for the work and is being compensated $50 for a year. It's inappropriate.
And so, with this, is it true that the drain commissioner could levy a, either a tax or a, some sort of way to collect funds on anybody who has a drain in a district?
The drain commissioner has the authority to levy taxes, yes. That is not something this drain commissioner has ever talked about doing, nor I believe would ever do.
But again, it's not for this position, or for this person, it's for this position.
This position has always had that authority. Whether you pay them $50 a year or you pay them the appropriate wage, they have that authority. It is the most, it has more authority than the governor. Absolutely.
Sure.
Because they can levy taxes without the vote of the people. But that's not, that's the statute. That's a drain commissioner's statute.
That seems like a pretty high risk.
Well, what do you mean, "It seems like a high risk"? What's the risk? We have an elected official. The elected official's always going to be there.
Yeah.
It's, it doesn't have to, this has nothing to do with whether you pay them a certain amount of money a year. They're elected, they have that authority.
Sure. Anyways, back to what I was saying about going to the $3,000 with a performance-based as far as paying per meeting and mileage. No evaluation, I never said that. No merit, I never said that.
My apologies, because I hear performance and I thought that's what you meant. So, I apologize. Because, and I, you know, it's pretty easy to connect that because you said, "If we pay this person, how do we know they're not, you know, we're going to give them their money and they're not going to do their job?" So, you could see how I could put those two things together.
I, I think the two of us are done. I don't want to speak for Commissioner Williams.
I'll, I only have one thing. I did do a couple, three phone calls, and I, unfortunately, only one person called me back and it was Cool Draft County. And he was telling me, and I couldn't find it, that their elected official, they appointed the Director of Road Commission to do it.
And you can...
Pay him a straight $4,000, period.
Yeah, so...
And I can't think of any other one that should be more capable of doing it as somebody with the road commission.
You can only do that if you have a certain population. And we're above that population. I don't remember the number off the top of my head. But yes, the commission can take the drain, take the position of drain commissioner and eliminate it and put the road commission in place. But it's, it's under, it's not our population. I don't have my drain commissioner MCL in front of me.
And paying the drain commissioner 6,000, I mean, that's a little bit less...
They can't hear you, John.
Sorry. That's a little bit less than what commissioners get. And the commissioners do a lot of work.
Mm-hmm.
In Michigan, counties with a population under 12,000 can choose to eliminate the office of county drain commissioner and transfer its responsibility to the county road commission.
Yeah.
We are not under 12,000.
We will always have the selected official.
How about if we just...
If we aren't so insulting as a commission that this person just says goodbye.
How about if we just pay him 6,000, and that would be his mileage also?
Can't though.
You can't do that.
No?
No. So, the statute requires that you, that you pay real expenses. And so, those real expenses in the statute are, you know, your travel and, and mileage. That would be real expenses.
Because I know one other time we were going to go with fund balance to pay something, and that was an absolute no-no, which I agree with. So, any other discussion?
I guess the only other one is, you had phone calls out. You wanted to do a presentation. But with the current motion on the table, those items wouldn't even come before the board unless we, you know, the motions rescinded or wanted tables. The only way that we'll get the other information on the calls you're waiting and what Commissioner Johnson wanted to present as well.
Pretty sure you guys know what my vote would be, so we can, the motions are out there. So, I would like a roll call when it comes.
Okay. So, I... No other discussion?
Well, I was going to say, the one thing, and Commissioner Williams pointed it out, there are parts by statute, and, and those are the same compensations. Mileage, per diem. For example, even the, the one that he's required to go down to Lansing. There's one of those annually, as well as one here. To the best of my knowledge, looking back, he hadn't filed for reimbursement from those. He did those out of pocket himself. Now, whether he knew that or not, the statute was pretty clear on that's supposed to be provided by us.
Could we recognize Ms. Young to jump in?
Um, I think the one downstate, isn't that monthly?
I'm sorry, what is that?
The one down in Lansing, that's monthly.
Yes, it's monthly.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm saying correctly, yeah, monthly.
Okay. Yeah. I just wanted to make sure, because, so one of the items is, I would set like a budget. So, this is a, a new department, because right now it's just one line associated with it. And just the mileage to go down to Lansing would approximately, right now, and this is rough, is around $6,000 if he went monthly. And then whatever traveling he would do within Delta County, plus his 6,000 salary. So, I just wanted to make sure that we were talking. Because I just keep hearing 6,000 over and over again, and...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I understand that, you know...
And plus his stay, so if he has to, you know, $200 for a night at a hotel and meals.
Yeah. I mean, I understand that this is something that is, you know, we have to pay someone, and we weren't expecting to have to pay someone coming into this. But this is an elected official who is doing their job and who, when they first got into the job, thought, "Must not be that big of a job, because people told me there's only one drain and there's nothing to do." But there is a lot to do. This person is working very hard. They are working every day out, outdoing the work that needs to be done. There's a lot of coordinating going on, especially with all of the road construction along M-35. I mean, there is a lot of work that this person is doing. And we have not paid or compensated for the, the two and a half years that the person has been in the position. And it's just, you know, a person doing a job deserves to be compensated for the job that they're doing. I, I just, I feel that we need to compensate people for the work that they do.
Nancy, how long is the term on this?
Four years. It's four years, yeah.
There's no more discussion, a request of roll call vote.
And could you repeat the motion, please?
Okay. It was moved by Commissioner Van Genhoven and seconded by Commissioner Williams to increase the drain commissioner's sali, salary to $6,000 per year and with, and expenses. And expenses.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Ann Melner?
No.
Okay. Uh, we will move on to payment of bills.
I'm sure he's just going to say, "Screw you guys," you know, at this point. Why wouldn't he? We obviously don't care about our elected officials.
Um, Commissioner Melner, I would like to request a motion to be put on, to defer it back to finance for review. I don't want it to be a done deal. I just want to return it back to finance, and we can come up with a, a plan moving forward and bringing up Commissioner Johnson's. Is that okay if I can?
Yeah, I mean, we should be doing something. Right, absolutely. I just don't want it to die.
I just don't like seeing it come out of, in no fun.
So, we need a motion?
I'll move that we send the request on the drain commissioner's salary back to finance.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Okay.
Sorry.
Payment of bills.
I've examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the claimants for the amounts allowed. Grand total of bills, $2,190,639.99. Commissioner expenses, $2,445.40. Thank you.
Motion to pay bills.
Support.
Okay, roll call. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ann Melner?
Yes.
Okay. Number two, planning, commission, ordinance.
This is in regards to our public hearing that we just had earlier tonight. The change that was presented was removing one of the commissioners' positions into a township association member that is also an individual that we perform planning and zoning services for.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance as amended.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number three...
We should do a roll call, just because it's an ordinance.
Okay. Roll call?
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ann Melner?
Yes.
Motion passed. Uh, number three, magistrate job description.
Judge Parks has reviewed his job description for the magistrate position. Last time it was modified was in 2019. And he is seeking approval from the, or support from the Board of Commissioners.
Any kind of support?
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number four, resolution approving magistrate appointment of John Harris.
Again, Judge Parks is seeking approval from the Board of Commissioners regarding the appointment of Mr. Harris as the new magistrate.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Again, it's a resolution, we'll have to do a roll call.
Resolution, I'm sorry.
Okay. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ann Melner?
Yes.
And pass. Uh, number five, J. Harris transfer, request for lump sum payout and fill position. Probation officer, male position.
With the adoption of the resolution in the prior agenda item, we're seeking to pay out Mr. Harris and also fill the position.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number six, resignation of M., oh boy. Shellfull, request to fill seasonal park clerk.
We're requesting to fill this seasonal parks clerk position. We've already posted this position on our website in various other areas. So, we're just seeking to fill it.
So moved.
Support. Can I get support?
Support. Can you send her a thank you letter as well?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed. Number seven, resignation of M. Morrison, request for lump sum payout and to fill custodian one position.
This is normal business. We received a resignation for, from Mr. Morrison. We're seeking lump sum payout and to fill the position approval. And this one has also been posted.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passed.
I was going to send a letter.
Yes, and send a thank you.
Number eight, administrator contract. Just between me, with me and you doing the negotiations, you want to take it over?
Oh, okay.
Or are we just...
Um, well, everybody has the final negotiated contract included or in front of them. If there's any questions, we can answer questions related to the negotiation. Otherwise, I, I think you've got the contract and have reviewed it, unless you want to go through the, the negotiations.
I don't think, everybody's got it, so...
Okay.
The only thing that would need to be changed is the date on the...
Right. So, yeah, there's a, there's a spot in here where it puts the effective date, and it just has insert date. So, we ought to obviously put that date in there. And then remove under Emily DeSalvo, Ms. DeSalvo's name, under section nine notices. It says, "Enter address." Apparently, that's not necessary in the contract, so we would remove that. So, those would be two things that we would change. We would remove the address and then enter the date for which the contract is entered into.
Correct.
Typically, we write underneath, "Current address on file in human resources."
Yeah, current, okay, let me put that...
So, I could change, and we just send it to the most current address typically.
So, it would say, "Current address on file..."
In human resources.
...with HR. Okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any more discussion? And I, we want a roll call.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Van Genhoven?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ann Melner?
Yes.
Okay. We have approved contract. Okay. Number nine...
What's the effective date?
Effective date would be the date that she would sign, correct?
Isn't the effective date today? Because it's the date that we've completed the contract?
Yep.
So, her first day would be today. I just want to make sure.
Well...
That was, that's your, I'm sorry, it says, um...
Until she actually signs it. I think the day she signs it would be...
Says entered into this contract. That's the question that Tracy had asked.
Yeah, it's, this agreement, it would entered into, it's when the employee would start. So, that's my opinion. It's, you're entering into this contract because the minute that they sign it, they're being paid. And so, it's the date that she would start, which I believe is the 23rd.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we discussed.
That's, yes, thank you.
Well, because we had an agreement that we could start earlier or not. So, I didn't know if it was a different date.
The 23rd.
We, when we were talking to her, we said the 23rd.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, thank you. And I've got that written down on there, so we'll get that in there.
Okay. Michigan Works lease agreement.
So, our administrator and I, along with representative from Michigan Works, met. And we negotiated a little bit more per square foot. But we also took out some things that they were paying for square footage-wise. So, this room is, Michigan Works was paying the full price for. They are no longer going to be paying for this room. It is now under our control, our calendar. It is now under our control, our calendar, so it's really great for us as commissioners, not so great for our board secretary, because she has to juggle more calendars, and she already does. And then we also negotiated a, a place for our dispatch to go. And so, we will have, oh, we haven't, sorry.
It was building and zoning and our maintenance department.
Oh.
Oh, yep. But we do have further talks with dispatch.
Okay.
Sorry, got ahead of myself.
I got really excited there for a second.
But.
We discussed, probably making an amendment, but we want to make sure that we have the exact square footage and where they are going to be placed in here.
Okay, thank you.
Now, did we discuss that room over here?
Yes, but IT wise, it might be better if we are over by building and zoning. And so, while this room is nice for accessibility, for running all of our lines and everything, it might be better to be closer to building and zoning, where there's also room and better infrastructure for like kitchen facilities and things like that. So, it, it is in the future, they're willing to work with us on that when the time comes. It's just, we're not ready for it right now, so why pay for something we're not ready for?
Okay.
So do we, in number two, where you said they lowered the square footage, which now makes sense to me that it's this room, do they still, can they still use it?
Yes.
Okay, so they would just reserve with the county?
Yep, and they, they, if I remember right, they still pay for, they were paying, they pay the supplies for our bathrooms also, which I wasn't aware, I forgot. And so, it's, they still pay for our toilet paper, which is nice. Thank you, Michigan Works, for our toilet paper, and so.
I do have two questions if we, if we're going to make a motion and then have discussion on it.
Yes. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Discussion?
Yeah, so I've got a couple of things here. Clause number 1.5, it talks about, no, no, I'm sorry, not clause number 1.5, it's 1.3. It talks about, there's a 30-day notice prior to the termination of the lease or an extension thereof, but then in, in clause 2.1, we talk about giving a 60-day notice for cancellation, and I just was a little bit confused about the two. Like, are they different, or are they the same? And if they're the same?
I think you're right, they should be the same.
Okay, so, so do we give 30 days or 60 days notice?
What's the pleasure of the board?
I would say probably 60 days would be better than 30.
Sure.
But I just was a little confused why that was mentioned twice, so that, that's that one. And then, 1.10, I don't know where that starts, because right now, it's like in the middle of a paragraph. So what part is 1.10?
So the part is where it's crossed off. I don't know, when we print it off in track changes.
I gotcha.
It shows that it's removed, but when you show, remove the track changes?
It's there.
It's there.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, that's okay, I just didn't understand if we had a section 1.1 and, okay.
No.
All right, great.
Yeah, we do, but it's up there.
Okay, and then, and then the last thing is just, well, there's a D missing on leased in 1.6, the first sentence, that's no big deal. But there is, it should say hereby leased, leased provided, I think it's leased. That's not a big deal, though. But there was one other one, which was, I was trying to understand. Oh, it's in section 1.7, so it's, I think, the second to the last paragraph, there's, there's, it says premises, and then there's a comma added, and I wasn't sure if you were trying to change the intent of that sentence by adding a comma or not. Because it's the same word, but there's a comma with it now. And it does change the intent, but I wasn't sure if that was what you were trying to do.
I believe the comma should be removed.
Yeah, I did, I thought the comma should not be there, so, okay, that was it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody?
Actually, can we, can I amend my motion to include the amendments?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
And then my support would need to be also amended.
Was that me?
That was you, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll amend my support.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Okay, number 10, FOIA appeal, number 25-94.
Commissioner Melner, I'd like to request to bring Prosecutor Wickman up here.
Okay.
And talk, it's one of her FOIs.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jump in? Yep. Okay. So we provided a memo related to the background and procedural background, the response, and what our office believes is the relevant case law. Obviously, this with a denial coming out of our office is not my legal opinion as civil counsel, so I just want to put that out there. This is information I provided that I, I believe would have been helpful for you to understand the complexity of the situation. But in essence, the request is asking for information that we do not have in a format or in a document as it currently stands, if we have the information that can be produced pursuant to the request, specifically related to subsection two and subsection three. I'm happy to go into more details, I don't know if there's more specific questions, I could probably talk for an hour on it, and I don't think anybody wants to hear that, so.
I, I do have some questions, if, if I may. So, I agree with you wholeheartedly that you do not have these documents in your possession because they're in raw data form, they're not, the data hasn't been pulled and synthesized into sort of a report or, you know, something like that.
Correct.
So, so you certainly don't have the document, but I would ask the question, if this requister had asked for the raw data and not a, you know, something that is a report of the raw data, how would you have responded?
With the analysis and the estimate of costs as is outlined in my memo.
But, but you would have said that the raw data is accessible?
The raw data is accessible. It's an arduous process to obtain that raw data, but it is accessible, yes.
Okay, okay. So that, I think, was my question, because, you know, as a FOIA, I mean, I will always support FOIA, I'm very pro-disclosure, and, you know, raw data is one of the conversations that's happening across, you know, across the nation at this point, talking about FOIA, because, you know, things used to always just be on paper and written down, but now they're in databases and, you know.
And, and I do think I need to clarify, this is going to be producing the paperwork. It is not going to be producing a database.
No, 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 it would just be the raw data, so.
I cannot produce the raw data from my database, though.
Okay.
I would have to physically have somebody from my office go into each and every file and produce the actual document that documents the resolution of that case. And the reason for that is partially because of our transition from one case tracking system to another case tracking system just about a year ago. That other data did not transfer over succinctly, basically. Because different data was entered in that old system than is entered in the new system. In reviewing, drafting, responding, and what have you, it's come to our attention that, you know, as any database, the information that goes in is the information that comes out. And different clerks in our office enter things differently depending on if it is a plea agreement, if it is a dismissal, if it is a jury verdict, if it is a plea as charged, all of those are entered differently. Then we have the issue, as outlined in our memo, and in our new case tracking system, we can dismiss a case or, even before we get to charging a case, we can get to the point of sending it back either for further review or for just declining charges altogether. But if we get additional information, new information, response to that further request, we reopen that exact file. So we don't have a direct documentation without pulling that paper, again, that one document that documents this was denied outright and now reauthorized. Then we have cases that we charge, and for whatever reason, we dismiss and then reauthorize. And so then we have, again, compounding documents on the same file. And so, how that's tracked, I can't just produce other than producing the actual plea form, the actual noli, the actual trial verdict that is produced from the court. And that's the difference there. And that's part of the issue with producing a database-related information. I can't produce a spreadsheet, because it would not provide the information as requested.
Okay, okay.
I did have a question that lends to that, then. So who actually owns that data? Is it the courts that own that data, or is it your office that owns that data?
Well, that's kind of a double-edged sword, because we, obviously, we know a case has been entered by plea, or we have a jury verdict, or it's been dismissed. The actual document that I would be generating to provide this data to this requister is something that's generated, owned by the court. We keep it in our file, but we don't make a decision based off of that document, because we have somebody physically in the courtroom attending the proceeding, and it doesn't make a difference moving forward for us, because at that point, it signals that the case is resolved or it's done. We don't have further decisions to make based on either resolution, trial, what have you. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. We have a data point to an extent, but the actual way to produce that for the requister is a document that is produced and used by the court, not something that we generate directly.
Thank you.
If it's a paper in the court file, it's a dollar a page from the clerk's office. We can generate that, but it's a dollar a page.
Gotcha. Okay, so the, so the, the data exists to produce this information, but the information hasn't been produced in anything that would be a public record at this point?
Correct. In my office.
Which is basically what you have responded with.
Correct, in my office. I would say that it is a public record by definition under the clerk's office, but it is not something produced or used or...
In your office.
In official capacity of my office, correct. So it's kind of nuanced from that standpoint.
Okay.
And then, I just have to add that not all documents in our, in our files are public. It's divided into PPI, personal.
Protection information, yeah, personally, yeah.
Right, and, and then some documents just are not public.
And that also complicates our response as well, because there are certain types of cases that are resolved in a way that results in a non-public resolution. There's four or five different categories of that, that we would also have to sift through, or if Nancy was responding to the same type of request, would have to sift through, because those cannot be produced, because they would essentially be producing a criminal record that is, no longer exists, or is expunged, or is deferred, or whatever the appropriate term would be.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
If I can add just one thing as final. Obviously, there's a large number that would be associated with generating that raw data. I'm highly concerned about what the impact overall in our office would be, and so it is something that, if that is a deposit that is made, I'm going to probably be moving forward with trying to request some sort of assistance in my office, because it will take one person, 1.87 years on a conservative estimate, to respond by pulling all those physical forms out of our files. So it, it's a huge impact on our office, and we can't, we can barely sacrifice one person to do that for that amount of time, let alone multiple people to shorten that timeframe.
1.87 years?
Correct.
At eight hours per day?
Seven hours per day. It is essentially going to require them to open 11,000 different files to obtain those, to obtain those records.
Okay.
Any more questions for prosecutor?
I know we do a week.
I have a quick question. The report that's on your page right now, the one from 2015, I think it was Phil Strom?
Correct.
Yeah, created that. Is that from the same data?
No.
Okay, so that's a different set of data.
That was from the old database, one and two, looking, I looked at it today after I saw your email, I didn't even know that was on there, actually. That was a surprise to me. And from that, I believe that was a presentation he's made to the, he made to the board at the time of budget, that would have been his first year as prosecutor.
Okay.
By timing wise, I've made similar presentations, it just never made it onto the website, basically, so.
But it's a different set of data.
Different set of data, and one of the things that, you know, we do is, we, we don't sit there and look at a win-loss category, because they're so, they really become very abstract, as I've described, where you have cases that were dismissed, and then reauthorized, and then resulted in a plea agreement, or might result in a trial verdict, or what have you. So they, they really become muddy in terms of numbers at the end of the day.
Okay.
This goes back to the question on who owns it. If part of that, like you said, you do up to a certain point, but the courts are the ones that actually generate the document and see that through, is that one where it actually comes to the county or is that actually have to go to the state through the court system to request that information?
It would not go through the state, and I would hate to just punt it over to Nancy.
I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to find who actually...
This was a very specific request to our office, and, you know, that's where it becomes a little muddy sometimes. We have those that, it's a specific request that comes through admin, and it's disseminated between all the, the department heads to see if there's any documents or records that fit within that category. This one was very specifically addressed to me and to my office.
Okay. So just to reiterate, 2021, 2022, and 2023 did have a list of authorized charges, but 2024 and 2025 do not?
No, for number one.
For number one.
For number one, I already had generated a report for 2021, 2022, 2023, when the request came in. I had not generated a report documenting that same information for 2022 or 2025. As I indicate, I intend to in the future, so I intend to provide it to the requister. I don't feel I have to at this point, but as I probably be using it in any budget talks, I, I would be intending to. But it was not generated at the time of the request.
And it's only for item number one?
That's correct.
Which is the total number of criminal cases filed?
That was my specific question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, one last thing. No, there's just, no, it's okay, it's, I'll, I'll throw it to you after, because it's just a, it's just a typo in there, so that's it. Okay.
Okay. Is this, we need a motion on this or information only?
No, we have to, we have an action we have to take.
It's an appeal. You have to decide to uphold or...
Okay.
So we have one of three choices, well, technically four, but I don't think we're going to go for an extension unless there's some reason we needed to. We either reverse and hold or impart, uphold the hold and part, or under unusual circumstances, we can extend the 10 days. We were, it was requested that we uphold the denial in part, which is, I have to go back to where it is here.
It's on page two, I think.
Yep, it is.
Is it on page two?
No, three, I think it's three here.
Section three?
Yeah, section, uh, page three. Page three, section, section three, page three.
Yep, so, uphold the partial disclosure denial. So basically, what we would be doing if we agreed to this is that we are saying that we uphold the denial of the number two and three, which are records that did not exist, and one is providing the documents in item number one, and will continue to provide the documents, which would be for 2024 and 2025, when those become available. But then denying because the documents do not exist, or documents are not in their possession, I want to make sure to use the right term.
I think it's exist.
Are records within existing public records within my possession?
For section, section number one, it says the total number of criminal cases filed in '24 and '25 does not currently exist.
Yep. So I want to make sure that we get this right.
It's all, doesn't, I advise that this document does not exist, I advise that this document does not currently exist for number two and three. Number four, I advise this current document does not currently exist.
So, I would make a motion that we uphold the partial disclosure denial for FOIA appeal 2594, specifically related to items two, three, and four, that those documents do not currently exist, and that item number one, the requister was provided part of that request and will be provided the rest of that request after the 2024, 2025 files are produced.
That's a long motion. All support.
That's what it is.
Only for Nancy to catch up.
That's what it is, yeah, you're right.
You got it, Nancy?
I think so.
I'll watch the, watch the...
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. Oh, no.
Skipping down to number 12.
No, the appointment.
Yeah, we need that, number 12, actually, would be, what, 10A?
Well, 11.
11. Uh, appointment to Central Upper Peninsula Materials Management Planning Committee, there's one opening, so.
Correct. Chris Amel has stepped down, and he has also recommended the appointment of Mr. Todd Kingas from Delta Disposal to be appointed in his place.
I'm actually going to ask that this go up for a 30-day notice of appointment. I believe that all entities should be able to apply for this, not just a, a recommendation from someone who's stepping down. I know that's going to be coming forward from the opioid task force at our next meeting as well, because we just re... because we just received a retirement. And the person had also asked that the person taking over for them be appointed to the opioid task force. And we had decided, you know, at the opioid task force, it should be opened up to everybody. So I would like to see this tabled, well, or opened up for a 30-day notice of appointment, please.
That's been our standard, so.
That would be my motion, to open this up for...
Support? Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passed. We're going to put general public comment ahead of closed session, so general public comment.
Mattson Escanaba, again.
One second. On the, so we did do a 30-day notice of appointment on May 7th. Central Upper Peninsula Materials Management Planning Committee?
We did, I apologize.
Or May 6th, I apologize. I was trying to find the date, I couldn't remember it off the top of my head.
Okay.
Did we receive any applicants?
It's not on our, it's not on our agenda either. We haven't had it on our agenda.
Okay, I'll look into it.
Sorry, Ray. I just didn't want to really move on to the next one.
Excuse me.
Yeah, I did, I did 30 seconds.
You're getting better. Ray Mattson, Escanaba. I didn't want to mention things on the Drain Commission, because that's what, I wasn't going to do this. But I want to mention a couple of things I just heard tonight. First of all, Chris compares the 25,000 to Conservation District years ago for soil erosion. I think you should go back through the minutes. You should go back through what this board approved, and you'll find out the 25,000 had nothing whatsoever to do with soil erosion. I'd be glad to debate that with you someday, be great. The next thing is, I kept hearing commissioner, the Drain Commissioners working every day, every day. What? M-35, now think about this logically. M-35, it's M in front of it because it's a state highway. I'm not sure what the Drain Commissioner would be doing there. So MDOT's out there with their engineers, and Eagle is supervising everything and every drainage that's coming off that. I can't imagine what the Drain Commissioner was doing. And if the public or you, you want to know, there's 10 things that a Drain Commissioner can do, but doesn't have to do. And Kelly was right with the 12,000, you're going to have one forever, and that's why it was moved down to 50 bucks. The real reason I came here tonight, because I keep hearing this from Commissioner Williams, due for two years. So it's about time to start setting the record straight. And I'm also finally now known as, and I'm going to call myself that probably if I come up, I am the property owner to the South, along with my two buddies. So it makes it sound like we own the whole southern end of the forest. So it came down to where the county could buy, had money, in their budget for 1,400 acres. It was just that simple, with a trust fund grant. And I heard last time, through the debate between Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Williams, Mattson negotiated the whole deal. Mattson did the fieldwork through the Conservation District, never negotiated anything. The negotiation was Commissioner Rivard and Ryan Bergman. It should have been seen, and you can see there what was handed into the trust fund, and that's Ryan Bergman's signature on where the access to the county forests would be. Now, there were other people in the negotiation. Commissioner Melner, he even went to Lansing with us. And somebody else who's still alive, but was commissioner at the time, Mary Harrington, and of course, Commissioner Johnson. And obviously, I can't get it out in three minutes, but someday, if you'd like a, maybe a presentation where I could have as much time, I would like to debate that too with Commissioner Williams. Thank you for your time, three minutes comes quick.
I'll be quit.
Tricia Ross, Ford River Township, I have three quick thank yous. Thank you for finding a workaround to making comments, public comments, even if I'm watching it at, at home on, on YouTube. Thank you very much for finding a workaround. Secondly, thank you, Ashley, for being administrator, and good luck to you at the airport. And thank you, Board, for, and thank you, Emily, for being willing to come back. Thank you.
Joe Kaplan, Ford River Township. The annual appropriation over an eight-year period from 2015 to 2022 to the Conservation District was $50,000 for park operations. And in addition, the County of Delta will provide an appropriation of $25,000 for natural resource slash environmental assistance slash support to all county lands slash operations slash activities, and for natural resource slash environmental assistance to private landowners within Delta County and the administration of Delta County's SESC regulatory program. So to say that $25,000 didn't have anything to do with SESC is right there in a contract. And more importantly, that environmental assistance to private non-industrial landowners, that's the mission of the Conservation District. And the state of Michigan, through M-DAR, supports four full-time positions at the Conservation District to provide that to the taxpayers of Delta County and elsewhere. So I would love to know what that $25,000 was actually used for over that eight-year period, and from before, and if there was any reports or ever any questioning of how that $25,000 was spent every year, year in, year out. Thank you. Bob Behren?
Hasn't gotten any better.
Okay, the, this is from Romans, chapter one, starting with verse 18. The section of scripture is, "The Gentiles guilty before God. For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men, who hold the truth in unrighteousness; because that which may be known of God is manifest in them; for God hath showed it unto them. For the invisible things of him from the creation of world are clearly seen, being understood by the things that are made, even as eternal power and godhead, so that they are without excuse. Because that when they knew God, they glorified him not as God. Neither were thankful, but became vain in their imaginations, and their foolish heart was darkened; professing themselves to be wise, they became fools, and changed the glory of the uncorruptible God into an image made like corruptible man, into birds, and four-footed beasts, and creeping things. Wherefore God also gave them up to uncleanness, through the lusts of their own hearts, to dishonor their own bodies between themselves, who changed the truth of God into a lie, and worshipped and served the creature more than the Creator, who was blessed forever, amen. For this cause God gave them up unto vile affections; for even their women did change in nature, naturally into that which is against nature. And likewise also the men, leaving the natural use of the woman, burned in their lust, one toward another, men with men, working that which is unseemly, and receiving in themselves that recompense of their error, which was meat. And even as they did not like to retain God in their knowledge, God gave them over to a reprobate mind, to do those things which are not convenient, being filled with all unrighteousness, fornication, wickedness, covetousness, maliciousness, full of envy, murder, debate, deceit, malignity, whispers, backbiters, haters of God, despiteful, proud, boasters, inventors of evil things, disobedient to parents, without understanding, covenant-breakers, without natural affection, implacable and merciful, who, knowing the judgment of God, that they which commit such things are worthy of death, not only do the same, but have pleasure in them that do them." This was epitomized by Commissioner Van Gendhofen this past weekend, wearing her handmade outfit at Luddington Park, and demonstrating on the O'King, and also being an organizer of the Pro Pride, Pro Queer Month, Pro Pride Queer Month, whatever it is. And then carrying a sign that said, "Don't let the bastards grind you down." Well, I think anyone who understands, would realize that what they're putting forth there is, my question is, so God's people are, that question, so God's people are bastards? This is, this is ridiculous, and this is an elected official in this county, and it should be appalling to anyone that's out there. The last thing is a quote, "Never be afraid to trust an unknown future to a known God." Corey Ten, Ten Boom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Gottfried, Gladstone. First of all, I want to thank everybody, anybody in an official capacity, I understand. Thank you for standing up for Gladstone, appreciate you a lot over there. My question, I know you can't answer me. I'm a little confused by the, the 50 to 60 dollar thing. Does that mean he's not getting paid now? Or does he get paid? Because it almost sounded like he wasn't getting any money for the Drain Commission. And then, like I kind of say this to anybody, if you're not happy with your official business and you don't like where you're at, that's what they make resign papers for, so. That's all I got to say, thanks.
Any other public comment?
Buddy, I'm Mike Maskart, residing in Gladstone, Michigan. I have some friends, we got together and we found some really smart people. And you may or may not have gotten a note from Nancy where we have a notice. And several of us are going to come up and read this to you, so you are aware of it. So this is to all Delta County, Michigan elected and appointed officials. So I, Michael Maskart, as one of the 50 people, as seen in the 50-state constitutions, Republican in form, they're supposed to be, no order or not, that's what the Constitution calls for, come here, suey juris, meaning of a sound mind and sound body and of able age, full age. To, to present to you this notice that you are elected public servants, provide due care to those with all political power, the people of this county, okay? Governments were instituted by men for our equal protection and protection of our due rights. We all know things have gotten a little bit out of hand, and we are doing this to get a handle on it. So please take notice, the people are the sovereigns, okay? We the people, we have the power. And that meaning, meaning all political power and authority over the government servants and trustees that are instituted for our equal benefit, security, and protection. Government trustees shall always be amenable to the people, meaning that we are your bosses, okay? And we don't see a lot of that, to be honest. And it will change. And that was bolded for evidence in our thing, okay? So and then very recently, I don't know if you caught it, Supreme Justice Neil Gorsuch, he put out quite a video on this, on his YouTube, explaining all of this and telling how the people are going to take this country back. And it says, in that, he says, "We are all created equal, we have inalienable rights. They don't come from government, they belong to each and every one of us. The government derives its just powers from the consent of the governed." We are the sovereign of this country, we the people. And there is a reference to that video, I cannot provide it right now. And that's as far as I'm going to go. The rest of our group will follow on, get the rest of this read to you. Thank you.
Bonnie Hockla, Escanaba. So we are continuing with the, the notice. And I would like to speak as one of the people and look at the Michigan State Constitution preamble. "We, the people of the state of Michigan, grateful to Almighty God for the blessings of freedom, and earnestly desiring to secure these blessings undiminished to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this constitution." And I'm sure you know that posterity means our descendants, our children, and our children's children. "I feel a need and a dedicated requirement to preserve and leave to my grandchildren, as I'm sure you feel the same need to leave for your own grandchildren and children, the best government available, so they will be able to live a vibrant life, one where individual liberties are protected. Luckily, our amazing founders left us a republican form of government, which protects individual liberties. This is by way of our constitutional republic." Now I'm going to read to you constitutional law. Michigan Constitution, Article One, Section One, Political Power. "All political power is inherent in the people," as you heard from Mike. "Government is instituted for their equal benefit, security, and protection. Maxim of law, all political power is inherent to the people by decree of God. Thus, none can exist except it be derived from them," meaning the people. That's an American maxim. And our last maxim here, "One has authority when he has a legal or rightful power to act." And maxims are settled law. In a court of law, maxims will hold over anything else. So, does a democracy offer protection of individual liberties? Not at all. Individual liberties fall to majority votes, or what you could call mob rule. Only a republican form of government offers protection for individual liberty. Only it offers a people as sovereigns, the ones who hold all political power. The only king is our divine creator. The government office holders are political servants, who do the will of the people, according to our constitutional law, which you all took an oath to. So, this requires that the people steer the government in the right way. This requires a broad dissemination of knowledge, that's why we're here, informing you and everyone here, how things are going to be rolling from now on. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Stephanie Carpenter, Escanaba. Please take notice, the people have assembled to consult for the common good and realize our duty and authority to instruct our servants and trustees in all areas of government. A republican form of government guarantees that the people have the right for redress of grievances before doing the business of the people. Michigan Constitution, Article One, Section Three, Assembly, Consultation, Instruction, Petition. The people have the right to peacefully assemble and consult for the common good. And we have the right to instruct our representatives and to petition the government for redress of grievances. We are a republican form of government, not a democracy, which is majority rules. Maxim of law, our individual liberties, and they are antecedent to all government. A couple of definitions here, maladministration, which is a corrupt or incompetent administration as of a public office, which is also the actions of a government body which can be seen as an injustice. This also parallels with malfeasance. Maxim of law, individual liberties are antecedent to the government. We have the power, as we the people. Thank you.
Oh, Jim Stark, Gladstone. Maxim of law, a frequent occurrence to fundamental principles and a firm adherence to justice, virtue, and original law are indispensably necessary to preserve the blessings of liberty and good government, American maxim. And please take final notice. It is my wish, order, and demand that you publicly acknowledge the people's inherent right and authority to instruct all our servants and trustees in government by entering this notice into the next meeting minutes and post this notice within seven days on your local official website and our official building. If you believe any of the above claims are untrue, rebut by affidavit, sworn under penalty of perjury, point by point, within seven days, showing your constitutional grant of authority to usurp and infringe on the people's inherent rights. Failure to respond means that by tacit acquiescence, you agree all statements in this notice are truth and fact in the law, and agree to have these matters heard before the arbitrator of my choice, to be bound thereby, and agree that no court shall be able to rehear this matter. matter, but it shall stand as evidence of truth in all courts of record. Anyone suppressing this notice agrees to pay thirty thousand dollars. A response from an attorney not directly addressed by this affidavit will be considered a non-response. This notice is sent to you in peace and love of Jesus." "This notice is sent to you in love of Jesus Christ that you provide due care to all those who have political power, the people. Maxim of law, obedience makes government, not the name by which it is called." Now, Kelly, I'm going to tell you, the No Kings Rally. You want to know when we had a No Kings Rally? Two hundred and fifty years ago, by our forefathers, who signed our Declaration of Independence and thereafter had a constitution. And you people are not following it. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
Sorry. It's okay. Oh, see one.
Sam Aditz, Escanaba. I'd like to say, please do not forget your commissioners, also your citizens in our community, that I expect each of you to be a role model for the other citizens. And especially help the traditions to continue in our community. I'm going, I'm talking about also Flag Day. And we have many years, Elks used the building, the band shell in the Luddington Park to celebrate Flag Day. This time, we didn't see any flag at all, but some citizens were walking around, including you, Ms. Van Genhoven. I hope you have explanation for that, why we don't have flag on the Flag Day and why we don't celebrate it? What happened to Delta County? What happened to Escanaba? They've changed so much. I am very disappointed.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any none? We will move to closed session.
I'll move that we go into closed section, closed session for written legal opinion from our legal counsel, in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, Section fifteen point two six eight, paragraph eight H. Support.
Can you give the roll call?
Okay. Johnson.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Van Genhoven.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Ann Melner.
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Ann Meldner?
Yes.[687.51]